Provided to us as well, is what I assume. All right, are we all set?
Yep.
Everyone's microphones on?
Yep.
All right. We're going to call this meeting to order. Thanks for your patience. We're running two meetings right on top of each other here. This is a Bath Township Board of Trustees meeting for Monday, October 21st, followed by, or excuse me, following a special meeting to talk about the budget for fiscal year 25. Would you like to do a roll call?
Mr. Funes Bliss.
Now, a moment of silence, please. Thank you. That brings us to item three on the agenda, which is approval of the agenda. I did not hear from anyone any changes. You have a change, Karen?
I did provide to you, and I may need to have additional copies. I didn't expect the amount of attendance tonight. I wrote a memo on the recommendation from my office to the hiring of a new chief, as we received in your packet the retirement of Police Chief Gary Smith.
Thank you. So that's in addition to the packet?
Correct.
Items already on the agenda?
Items already on the agenda.
Got it. Thank you. Any other changes from folks? All right. Hearing none, I'd look for a motion to accept as presented.
I make the motion to accept the agenda as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions? All right. Hearing none, we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor of the agenda as it's been presented tonight say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we've got ourselves an agenda. Are there any conflicts of interest anyone would like to voice tonight? Give you time to think into your soul about your conflicts. All right, hearing none, we'll move on from item four. That brings us to item five, public statement one. Members of the public are invited to speak at the lectern up to three minutes on topics that are on the agenda tonight. There will be a second opportunity at the end of the meeting for folks for an additional three minutes to say whatever you'd like about whatever you'd like. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to do a public statement tonight? If you could introduce yourself and then roll right in.
Thank you. Tony Spagnolo, S.P.A.G.N.U.O.L.O. I'm a Clinton County prosecutor. I'd like to congratulate the chief for his retirement and a job well done while I've worked with him for the past three and a half, almost four years. I was asked here to speak on behalf of Chris Hamilton. Chris Hamilton has showed interest in the chief of police job. I've known Chris for quite some time. I really got to know him the past three and a half years because there were several incidences that took place in our county that were very dangerous and disruptive to our county. Two of the ones that come to mind, most importantly, is an incident that took place in Duett Township and the incident that took place not too long ago over here in Bath. The incident in Duett Township was at approximately 1:00, 2:00 in the morning. Duett Township came to my home and told me about the incident. There was a child barricaded in a trailer park over at King Arthur's along with a mother. The defendant had the child inside. I was able to work real closely with Chris Hamilton. He was very professional, very thorough, very calm. He managed the whole scene to make sure that there was no violence, which there could have been because there were guns, baby, mother, and it was domestic violence. And we were there until about 4:30 that morning. And I know a lot of people haven't been in these situations. I never was. I was a criminal defense lawyer for 30 years before being elected prosecutor. But it was outstanding to see Chris in action and have all the team together to make sure that this was a safe and good resolution. The second incident was obviously down here in Bath that everybody's aware of. We had some shots fired. We had a very sad situation where a young man lost his life. But I showed up to the scene and it was in the afternoon. And again, Chris showed some very professional decision-making skills and made sure that he did what he needed to do to keep the officer safe and the citizen safe. And it didn't turn out where everybody survived, but the poor young man did lose his life and we had the fire. So, like I said, I've known Chris for quite some time, even when he was a young man in high school and going to college. And I'd like to state that I wholeheartedly support Chris for the That's why I'm here. That's why I'm here, because of a strong police department. Now, let me talk to you on my professional side. I am also the chief of police for Duett Township. And Gary, congratulations on your retirement. I've only failed once, you know, try not to follow that up. But I've known Sergeant Hamilton for quite some time. My prior employment, I worked for Michigan State University for 26 years. I was on their SWAT team there, so I know a lot of the stuff that Chris is going through. Police departments don't need managers. They need leaders. And Sergeant Hamilton has proven that he is a leader. He has the respect of fellow law enforcement in this county and beyond. You don't have to go on big searches to find your good people. Look inside. They're here. They're trusted. They know the community. We need people like that leading our departments. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others in the audience who'd like to speak to the board tonight?
Lyle Lindmuller.
Your address.
Sorry?
Your address.
Tired.
I want to publicly congratulate Gary on his retirement. He's going to like it, just like I did. But I want to promote, to hire from within. I hope that you guys would look. You have qualified candidates that can do that job and they know what the police department is about here. At least try that first if you're going to go outside. And if you don't like what you see here, then you don't go outside. But I think you've got the people. If you had asked me two years ago if we had anybody else, I would have probably told you no, outside of Gary. But in the last two years, there's two of them that have come really far ahead and stepped up. So, my thing is, I really want you to try to stay inside and keep our department the way it was through Jack's years, Scott's years, my years, Gary's years. So, if you could try to do that, stay inside, it'd be great. I am also going to throw my support for Chris. He's come a long way in the last two, three years to getting the morale going for the SWAT team, which was about defunct at the time, pulled it all the way through to funding for that team, for all the municipalities, which has never been done all the way back to 1992. So, I think he's got the ability to lead and take the department forward. When he called and asked me for my support, we had a little conversation about, you know, his direction. And he wants to keep things going up.
I've cared for everyone in their own way, some more than others. But I would like to say that I understand the need to look abroad, excuse me, but I also agree that we have some good candidates here. And I think, obviously, the two that are being mentioned, there's so much more to a department than a tactical stance, although I know it's very, very important. But from running a department is huge. There's importance in everything that needs to be done. And I have watched Lieutenant Martigan start right from the beginning as a lieutenant and learning as a sergeant and much more so as a lieutenant. Every day, he's grown so much. And I really, in my opinion, feel that he today could start running the department if needed. And many times when chief wasn't here, vacation or whatever, you know, things still come up. He is my go-to guy. He's our go-to guy, in my opinion. If I had a tactical question, which I don't a lot, you know, absolutely, I would go to Chris. And he's a fine leader in that aspect, probably the best in the county and, you know, in the greater Lansing area, in my opinion. I look at it from a different view. I look at it, who knows the rules? Who knows our policy? Who knows our laws? Who knows the day-to-day? And that's what you need to run a department. And Lieutenant Martigan does a phenomenal job of that. And what he doesn't know, he finds out. And to me, that's a very important thing to think about in this very broad position. So, I just would respectfully ask to keep that in mind. And I'm going to miss Gary terribly. We kind of, we started together, sort of, and he's going to, he's going to be missed by me especially. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the board tonight? Welcome. If you could introduce yourself and then head right into it.
Andrew Wiswasser, W.I.S.W.A.S.S.E.R. It's kind of, I'm sure you're familiar with it. Property owner, business owner in Bath Township. I'm a road patrol sergeant for Duett Township Police, assistant team commander for Clinton County SOT. And I'm currently the elected, or elect supervisor to take hold in Victor Township here next month. So, I came to express my support as well as looking to do this internally versus externally for your, to fill the vacancy created by Chief Smith's retirement. I think that's an important thing within an agency, and it's not something that you're recreating the wheel on. This is a practice that goes on in the greater Lansing area on a, you know, yearly basis. You looked at Meridian Township, East Lansing, Lansing Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, Clinton County. I mean, everybody that's in those roles right there has came from within those agencies. And I think in all fairness, if you're going to do an internal process, it would only be fair to do that first and then look to do an external process because you wouldn't be comparing apples to apples if you have external candidates and internal candidates all at the same time. You're going to have people like Chris or Matt that know the inner workings of Bath Township, but then you have an external person that has no idea about Bath Township. And it's not a true comparison of one's knowledge. I think it's only fair if you're going to do an external process to keep them separate, only if you don't find what you're looking for in the two that are here. I'm going to, I express my support for Sergeant Hamilton. I think he would make a phenomenal chief here. To say that Chris has been an influence in my life would be an understatement. I've known him for approximately 20 years, both as a friend and colleague. He's taught me a lot about this job, a lot of things that sometimes we talk about, give it 24 hours before you respond. And that's definitely helped me a lot in my career. And I know that he's done that for many other people next door. On top of that, I don't just look at Chris as a tactical leader or his knowledge, that's all it is. He has a lot of experience elsewhere with that. Through the last year, he's met with almost every township within Clinton County to secure funding for the SOT team. And not only that, he's had to run the budget of that and basically operate that team on a very limited amount of funds for the past several years until this came about. That's significantly notable for apartment. He's ran a department on a smaller scale for the last several years, and he's done a bang-up job at it. So, looking forward, I think he would make an excellent choice for that. He's committed to it, and most of all, he's involved in your community here. Chris could have been other places, but he chose to stand back.
From a jurisdiction to the south that we might have a Facebook rivalry with. And he said something about me attending the game as a community policing event and how Bath is so good at Facebook, but they're a better department for policing. And I said, I think I'd need to challenge you on that. Here at this game, I have every single one of these players, the place that I have in this community, I think is even more important, too. These people know me. I know them. Our values are aligned. And I think that if given the opportunity, I can bring Bath Township closer to the community. And with your support in keeping this an internal process, I think we can make this the best department that we've ever had. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did bring several packets of letters of support for people that could not be here tonight. I don't know if it's appropriate to give those to you now or get those to you afterwards.
Could you give them to the superintendent? She'll distribute them. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the board tonight? Going once, going twice. All right, we're going to move on. Thanks to those that shared their public comment with us. Tonight, again, there will be a second opportunity at the end of the meeting. First up is items from county, state, federal, and other agencies. I don't see anybody. Do you know anybody's coming tonight? All right. Next up is the consent agenda. It looks like we've got some meetings from Election Commission, Park Lake Advisory Board, and the REC Advisory Committee. How would you all like to handle those?
Make a motion to accept them as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second because as a consent agenda, we don't have any discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any opposed? All right, the consent agenda passes. That moves us to item eight, approval of minutes. We have one set of minutes from our.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Motion carries. That brings us to the approval of vouchers, item nine on your agenda. Would you all like to approve the vouchers that have been presented to us tonight?
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers as submitted.
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the vouchers. Is there any questions or comments on the vouchers tonight? Hopefully, everyone signed off on them in the office. I wasn't looking at you, Sheri.
Make a note to do it after the meeting, please.
All right, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote on this one.
Kellerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challenger, yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. That brings us to item 10, the treasurer's report. Jennifer's going to talk to us again in January about where our funds are. So, nothing tonight. No committee appointments, number 11, and no township committee reports, number 12. That does bring us to item 13, which is unfinished business. We're going to start with large letter A, items for introduction and discussion, the financial audit presentation for fiscal year 2023. We've been waiting for so long, so excited to hear.
From Steve.
What the numbers are.
Even though we've looked at it multiple times already.
Our friend from Sigri Crandall, welcome. Do you need the TVs for this?
No, I don't.
All right.
I feel very safe here tonight. Never been at a meeting where I felt so safe. So, thanks for coming, guys.
Well, we'll see what numbers you came up with first.
So, and I'm sorry, it has been a long time. So, we're looking at the December 31st, 23 audit.
Yep.
We're way down the road from that. I was really busy all summer with audits. And then last month, I got sick, so I apologize for that as well. So, I'm going to briefly go over the auditor's report, look at the financial statements. I'm just going to focus on the general fund.
Okay.
Talk about internal control findings. And I'm going to spend a minute on your ARPA funding. You had an extra engagement this year because you spent over $750,000 in federal funds. So, I'll talk about that briefly and then open it up for questions. If you want to put the timer on, you can do.
He's like, three minutes is good.
So, as far as the auditor's report goes, that's on our letterhead. It's on page one of the statements. There's three kinds of opinions that you can receive. Two are bad, one is good. You receive the good one, an unmodified or a clean audit opinion. Basically states that the financial statement, December 31st, 2023, your fund balance increased $626,000 during the year. Revenues of $5.2 million exceeded the expenditures of 3.8. You also had a transfer to the Public Safety Fund of $756,000. So, you did a really good job increasing the fund balance. Ending fund balance or equity was $4 million at 12/31/23. The unassigned or unrestricted part of your fund balance was just over $2 million. That represents approximately 54% of your total expenditures for the year, the 3.8 million. The Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, they recommend a minimum unrestricted fund balance of 17%. So, you're all in excess of that. So, overall, I would say the township's in good shape financially. As far as internal control findings go, you didn't have it. So, that's great news. I do about 150 audits, and 95% of my clients receive at least one finding. So, to have none is great. You do contract with another CPA firm. I think that's a great idea, especially with a township this size. You're a pretty good-sized township. And it's really good that you don't have any comments. As far as the ARPA money goes, so you spent most of your ARPA money this year. So, you spend over $750,000 in federal funds, you have to have what's called a single audit. That amount's going to go up to a million. It's not in effect yet, but it's moving, I think, in October, well, this month. If your fiscal year started October 1st, you'd have a $1 million threshold. But, so, this year, if you spend over $750,000, you'd have to have one. But the feds did allow us to do an engagement where it wasn't a full-blown single audit. So, we just looked at compliance and allowable costs. So, allowable costs, allowable activities. You spent your money on allowable costs and activities. There weren't a whole lot of things that you couldn't spend it on. Things like, you couldn't spend it on pension, you couldn't spend it on debt. We looked at all that, and that went really well. The audit went really well. I want to thank clerk treasurer, superintendent, and all of their staff. Thanks for being ready for us. Thanks for answering all of our questions. We're only here a couple days. We've got a lot of the work done in advance, so it made it really smooth. So, I want to thank you. And now, I'll just open it up if you have any questions.
Questions? It sounds like none.
Congratulations, chief, on your retirement. Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. I want to congratulate the superintendent and her staff on this great audit, the treasurer for sure, and the clerk for their help. If you recall, we had planned to spend $1.6 million from the fund balance, but the end result is putting more than $600,000 in the fund balance. That's a, you know, $2.2 million swing in the right direction, which is also some of why you're seeing the cuts from the budget proposal this year, knowing that we overestimated by 2.2 million last year. I think that gives us some calm that we have the space to do that. Other comments about the audit? This is like the sexiest thing we do all year, guys. Come on. All right. Thank you for that. We'll move right into item large B, items for action. And the first is the acceptance of the financial audit from fiscal year 23. Is this like an acceptance or a receiving?
We're accepting it.
Okay. And if we don't accept it, it doesn't really matter. This is the audit, right?
This is the audit.
Got it. Just want to make that clear to folks. How would you all like to handle this document?
I move we accept the audit.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions? I have this down as a roll call vote. Is that what you have? Great.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challenger, yes. Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is item 13, large B, small B, Mallory Building Special Use Permit. And our planner is here to present that.
Recommendation from the department and then voted on by the planning commission was to approve the site plan and recommend the approval, the conditional approval of the special use permit. And the conditions were included in the staff report. That's within your packet. But basically, there are normal sloughed conditions that we would do with the land use of this size and caliber. The only additional conditions placed were just some extra sheets that we'd like to see in the civil set of plans that they submit when they go for the construction. So.
At the planning commission, we had talked about the expansion of the meager privacy fence that they have there currently.
Yep.
And I see a privacy fence noted in the plan. Is that the expanded version?
That's expanded. And they submitted a third set of plans, which I don't know, I can't see what you're looking at. But they submitted a third set to our department that remedied, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Remedied that. So, we didn't put it as a condition.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
Because you're approving the submitted set.
And the intent was to block headlights in the parking spaces from shining onto the apartments next door.
Yeah, because it's a residential, residential use, and so want to mitigate light as much as possible. The applicants were perfectly willing to do that, and we appreciate them working with the township through this process.
That was my one question. So, thank you.
Can you share what the planning commission vote was?
Yeah, it was unanimous.
Other questions?
I knew you were going to ask, so I looked at it.
I'm nothing if not consistent.
I appreciate that. Makes it easy.
All right, we've heard from this already, one meeting. We've got some more answers here. Anything hanging out there before we decide an action on this? All right, hearing none. I think what we're looking for is a motion to approve the special use permit, and I would advocate that those.
To approve the Mallory Building Special Use Permit and associated conditions in the recommendation report.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Is there other discussion or questions? Al, did you have a question?
No. Just a sigh.
Just a sigh. All right. Purchase, consumption, or possession of alcoholic liquor by underage persons. Our chief is here to share about that.
The attorney's office did make some corrections on. Other than that, it's simply, we've had ordinance for years. It's bringing our township ordinance in line with the current estate law. Just an update on it.
Great, thank you. Questions, thoughts? All right, then we'd be looking for a motion to introduce and questions or discussion. Everyone know where we're at? All right, let's do a roll call vote then.
Ms. Butler-Challenger, yes. Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Wonderful. Motion carries. Thank you. That brings us to the last item in our items for action under unfinished business, 13, large B, small D, Bath Summer Festival. We have Adam Montre and Sandra McIntosh. I don't see.
Just me.
Just you.
Figured they came last time when I couldn't be here. So, we gave them the night off. All right, so, thank you all. I'm not going to repeat the things that Sandra and the Ortes said last time. I know that they were here. They love having a summer festival. The community has clearly shown interest in having this for a number of years, lots of good memories from people who grew up here or be housed at the township level, that someone needs to be tasked with it. We've had a number of people come to the township committee, not so much at meetings, but more is we see people out and about in the community and say that they would like to do it. If you all choose to not have it housed at the committee level, or just have it at the township level, or however you would like to have it structured, that is fine by us. It seems most appropriate on our end that it would be an active, a recreation-type activity occurring in the park systems throughout the township. And so, the Recreation Advisory Committee would be, I guess I'd say, willing to be the responsible or coordinating entity of that event. Although, we do not have to be the owner of it.
That's helpful. Go ahead, Kate.
Do you think you have enough time from now until whenever in 2025 to be able to pull this off?
I think that we do. So, the dates that we'd be looking at historically would be that first weekend in August. I think that we are all realistic about, one, what we've heard about the amount of work and energy and time and effort that goes into it, really off the bat. You know, it can, it could be a Friday night, Saturday, Sunday. It does not have to be. It does not have to be. And so, being able to have something that the community can get excited about, have something that we can put in place and something that we can kind of lay foundation for future expansion is where we would be at. So, the other thing that we've talked about is having a number of the events that have come in the past few years in the township, like the car show. So, having things like a car show happen, but not having to have that coordination so the people who are responsible for the car show can organize that. Judy, just right before the meeting, said like with those activities, similar to how with trunk-or-treat, there's the farmer's market going on, there's the car show going on, there's the library doing activities. So, in that type of approach.
So, nobody is wanting to like start up Bath Days again?
Does not appear so.
Because nobody wants to take the responsibility and the liability and all that. They want to put it on the township's shoulders. I'm not for that, just so you know.
That's fine.
I'm not for that at all. Because I know what it takes to run the festival. And I don't see where we have a staff at the township to do that.
I think that the way, so I appreciate that. I think that the way it's set up is that we have people on the Recreation Advisory Committee. We have three people in the community that are willing to put the time and energy and effort into it and have thought about it for multiple years. I don't think, my conversations with the people who used to run Bath Days have nothing to do or any mention of, we want to make the township do anything. This is not a response to someone saying the township should do this. This is a Recreation Advisory Committee response to the township residents every time it comes up saying, we want to do this. We'd like someone to do it. We'd like someone to coordinate it. And in our five-year...
They want us to do it, but so...
In, I mean, in our five-year rec plan, what we heard from surveys of the community was that they would like more activities that they're able to attend and gather around.
How are you looking at funding?
So, I think that we'd ask for a small, potentially have a conversation around small amount of funding to start from the township. Amount TBD, but small. Similar, the farmer's market did that as well. And then coordinating sponsorships through relationships that people who are interested in this already have. I think that we clearly need to set a budget. We clearly need to say what's capable within that budget and be able to execute well in the first...